Policy committee meeting. Uh, here at Coff County Board of Education. We've got a lot of people here. I'm gonna go ahead and jump right into item number one, which is the policy, it's gonna have to be a new policy, prohibition of or possession and use of personal electronic devices. Brief deal of kind of where I've been at on these things. I think everybody is aware of the Warren County policy that they have in place at this time. I think we went over that in the last policy committee meeting and there was questions about what was gonna change. Some things were gonna change and they were gonna submit theirs back to TSBA to make sure stuff was right. Uh, as a matter of fact, as a part of that, uh, we had some email traffic with Ms. Jennifer White with TSBA, um, where we were asking for some of those. Uh, the only thing basically we got from them was, uh, the new state law requires certain specific exemptions regarding special education students and emergency use. Uh, and, uh, the board will be required to include a process for contacting parents during an emergency. And that current policy does not have that provision. So those two items is not in the Warren Counties. Uh, from what I've read, and I think everybody was provided that in the, in the actual forty-nine dash six dash three House bill. It's kind of open with, uh, there's opportunities in it that the teacher or principal can make a discretion if the devices could be used during instructional time. So it doesn't completely borrow them. Warren County's pos- policy does. So there's some items there. Um, you know, at first it was, I was a little adamant because we do not, we don't have a model policy per se from TSBA as we are always used to having on just about any policy. TSBA did, and I think that was in the packet as well, have the, this little sheet of just some of the synopsis, the things that were broke down. That you must have. Uh, like I say, you know, Warren Counties, if, if we go with a complete block, it's in Warren Counties. If we don't go with a complete block, that's something we're gonna have to discuss and look at and possibly incorporate. Uh, we will have to add to the Warren Counties if we use that as a blueprint. Use of devices in the IEP or five oh four or individual learning plans, if that's the recommendation or plugged in, that would have to go into the Warren Counties. Uh, so basically those, those two things. I think we already have a, we already have in the system here a, uh, means of contacting all parents in, in an emergency anyways. So that's kind of a moot point to be in the policy unless you need to reiterate it in the policy. I think that's what they're meaning. And, uh, so we either completely block them or we put in exceptions. And then we add in the IEP or five oh four or individual learning plan. That's kind of where I'm at with all of the documentation in front of us. And at this time, I'm gonna open it up for further discussion.
Mr. Chairman, let me say something. It's evident that we're gonna have to have a new policy based on state law, even though we've had something in our policies for the last several years about use of cell phones and so forth. We're gonna have to come up with a new policy, one way or the other, and add some things to it. So, you know, it's a matter, if you wanna take what Warren County has and look at that as a base and then add to it, and it's probably gonna be late June before TSBA will be able to come out with a model policy. So that's something to think about also. But I think if you look at Warren Counties and then add to it, what we need to add to it, based on what Jennifer's told us about the new laws and so forth, at least it would get the word out that we're gonna have a no-cellphone policy, however y'all wanna come up with it. But it's evident, we've gotta have, we've gotta have one different from what we have now, regardless of which way you go with it.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna consider that the, I wanna hear what the principals think later, but I'm gonna sit, ask that we consider go ahead and implementing, as Al would just say, if I interpret that right, and adding the Warren County and adding these two whatever to it. We can all, and get, get the ball rolling. We can always come back later on if we need to and amend that after the state comes out with their final product with a model policy. We need to tweak it a little. We could do that then. Just, I hate that we, I don't wanna push this back too far because I think in agreement that we need to get this implemented for the next school session. And, um, you know, we could tweak it and debate it and whatever all day long, but I'm gonna suggest probably we could seriously consider, and I haven't read the Warren County, but we met with the chairman earlier, as you all know and whatever, but that we, and I know we're not gonna vote on it tonight, but we, uh, I'm gonna suggest we seriously think about implementing the Warren County plus adding and incorporating the two amendments or additions or whatever.
That would be, that would be voting for it tonight, which is perfectly fine. It still has to go to the board. One thing to keep in mind is even if we didn't do anything tonight with this, the main board can, can still act on the policy and develop a policy and move forward. And you can also waive the second reading if we needed to, to get it implemented in time. So there's plenty of ways that we, don't have to rush, but I don't, you know, the general consensus, I mean, if you wanna make a, if you wanna make a motion, as you talked about, and get a second, we can get it on the floor and then open it up and really get some ideas because I definitely wanna know how things are already working.
Yes.
And if we can implement those into these.
Keep in mind that this group can, can make a motion and approve it pending their recommendation to the full board, and it will be on the May agenda.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if you, okay, if I interpret this right, then I'm gonna make the motion that we implement or adopt or whatever the Warren County plus adding in the two things. And then submit that to the full board for review and voting and whatever.
Is there a motion's been made? Is there a second?
I'll second it so we can discuss it.
All right. All right. So motion has been made to adopt the Warren County Board of Education prohibition of possession and use of personal electronic devices policy. Uh, and also add the language of including the IEP five oh four or individual learning plans. And I guess your second item would be to list in the policy our, emergency notification language. Because the, anything else, whether it's going to be a complete ban or exceptions made, has to come in via amendment. Is that correct? Is that the way your motion?
Say that again. Please.
Your motion was to accept the Warren County Board of Education se- uh, prohibition of possession and use of personal electronic devices policy with the inclusion of adding the language, the students may use devices included in their IEP five oh four individual learning plan. And we must post in there as well the language of our notification, emergency notification for parents.
Should it also include the students taking the device in the morning?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. So that would technically be a or your individ- or your individual learning plan. Yeah.
And, and
So that would be covered under those.
Mr. Chair, one comment too. There's also in the law, I mean, Warren Counties does not meet the letter of this new law.
Well, this is, we're not voting yet.
Okay.
This is to get the, the item on the floor.
Okay.
Then we'll open up for full discussion and
Okay.
turn it loose.
Okay.
And then it's open for amendment. It's open for all.
Okay.
So motion's been made, been seconded. Uh, we are now open for discussion.
First of all, I'm concerned that it doesn't meet the letter of the law. Um, in the fact that a teacher can authorize use of a communication device in the classroom for instructional purposes. That's in part two of the House bill. Uh, currently in my school, we have a no-cellphone policy during instructional time. And I have surveyed my teachers and I have over seventy-five percent of them that say that our cellphone policy meets the bill for that. We have pouches in each classroom now that they can turn their cellphone in or they have to, they can't be seen or heard, right? If they are seen or heard and it's not approved by the teacher, they're turned into the office. We keep them till the end of the day and there are consequences, a hierarchy of consequences that they meet. This school year so far, on first offenses, I pulled the discipline data and I have four-hundred-and-thirty kids. This school year, I've had forty-seven cellphone offenses the whole year for first offense. Second offense, I've only had twelve, which tells me what we're doing for first offense works. And in the third quarter of this year, I only had one. So I think buying the pouches and saying that they're prohibited is not going to be what we need to benefit our students or our teachers. We have many instances where teachers do use them for instructional purposes. I tell my teachers that the ones that do have complaints about the cellphone policy, we're providing you the tools. You have to use those tools, turn them in to me so that we can provide the discipline and the backing that we need to for the teachers. So that the students understand when they get a job, when they're working on the line, when they're working as a professional, there are times and places you can use your phone. It's not gonna be locked in a pouch. You're gonna have to have the self-discipline to learn how to use that phone appropriately. It's just like now, we can't have our cellphones out on the table. We shouldn't be texting during meetings. We should say, Robert, I'd have to write you up. I think part of it, once they get to secondary level, is we are training them to be responsible adults. And, uh, having a policy like this that my teachers have bought into and they see that we do support them. They know that if they turn a cellphone into us, we're gonna follow the proper steps to take care of that. So I think sometimes taking all the temptation away doesn't always solve the problem.
Thank you for sharing that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So the long and the short, that's back to what I was mentioning the first time. Warren County policy is a complete bar and ban.
Right.
Law doesn't.
That's, that's right.
Which way, you know, would, obviously you gotta go the law way. You can't go Warren County way on that.
And there's also a limited number of consequences too, Robert, when you think about that because, or Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. You know, the only consequences we have available to us at this time in my building are lunch detention, ICE day, and rarely do they get sent to alternative school. So we keep violating this as we know they, they may, then we're gonna get ourselves painted into a corner, so to speak.
Yeah. I'm trying to write down and track the differences that are definite, a definite.
I wanna commend you because I've had, it goes back to whoever's enforcing it.
Yes.
And if we've got a system-wide plan where everybody's doing the same thing, it's gonna be easier for the principal and everybody to
Yes, ma'am.
enforce this with the same consequences.
I agree.
And, uh, I will have to commend you because I, I talked with someone today that's kinda off the cuff, but they were saying how you followed the policy of, uh, bus problems. And that, that you were one of the schools that they were very complimentary of because that, and that goes back to following, following what needs to be done.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Um, but another thing and then that I would like to say too is that, um, I know in the high school level and even with ninth grade, there are students who are involved in sports and athletics. And they, they do need access to their phone 'cause a lot of them don't drive.
And it changes, you know, things change.
Right. Things just change all the time. And there's got to be a way that they can utilize that phone, that cellphone to get in touch with their parents.
Right.
Or be sitting at school or, or not, or lose out on a, on something.
Right. Exactly.
And that, that's the only thing that parents have talked to me about was that they didn't wanna lose that communication.
The transportation too, when you're talking about transportation, but we have like seventy-something students that are transported to the high school in the afternoon. So we lock them in this pouch. What am I gonna do to get those students on the bus in a timely manner and over to the high school for their sixth period or seventh period class? It, it, logistically, it's kind of a nightmare.
Right. And that's things that's, that we don't think of.
Right. Well, you wouldn't because you're not sitting in our shoes and have to think about it like that. So I thought it was important that we share these with you.
Let me ask you a question. Now, you're ninth grade?
Yes, ma'am.
I haven't gotten over to your school yet.
It's okay.
Um, are your teachers, do you require your teachers to enforce it?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I know in a lot of schools, you'll get teachers who are like, oh, it's okay, kids, take it out for now. And then you get those who are really tough. So it, it's really hard if you've got real lenient teachers for the tough ones because they come in with the attitude, well, I can get away with it.
Well, I'll, I'll say this. I'm not afraid to have those hard conversations with those teachers and explain to them they're making it hard on everyone by not following the policy and the procedure. Because if they do, and we're all as a united front, it, it changes the entire culture of the school and it also keeps our disciplinary policies and issues, you know, at a minimum. Honestly, it does. And once they start buying in and seeing that we are gonna support them and back them, then I feel like we get more buy-in with the teachers. And we have many of the students that when they get to us are like, oh, wow, we really appreciate that you're making folks follow the rules. So, you know, I, I feel like we have a good handle on it. That's why I surveyed the teachers, 'cause I thought, I said at faculty meeting, I may be misunderstanding, I may have a totally different perception of what's going on. So we sent out an anonymous survey. When seventy-five percent of them say they feel like it's not a problem and that the policy, I said, do we need to tweak the policy, add anything to it? And they don't, I feel like we're on the right path.
Either one.
It doesn't matter.
Well, I, I mean, I guess just two or three things and just, it just really tagging on because a lot has been brought out here. Um, in my building, and it's been quite some time now since I surveyed my teachers, but the primarily what I asked them is, would you prefer that there be a ban, a total ban on cell phones, or would you prefer that there be options where they could be utilized? And the vast majority of my staff did prefer a ban. Now, that was, it was up in the upper seventies percentage-wise, and I'd have to go back and look 'cause it's been several weeks now since we did that. But since that time, there have also been quite a bit of change with respect to the way the state law is, is going to read once we get to the summer. Um, and as Ms. Sellers said, you know, when I read that, you know, the law says that each Board of Education must implement a communication device policy that authorizes a teacher to allow a student to use a wireless communication device for educational purposes during instructional time. When I read that, it says to me, I've got a portion of teachers that have students use those phones occasionally in class for an instructional activity. My foreign language teachers are a good example of that. Uh, there are various activities they do, uh, where that, where those phones for all intents and purposes get connected and they're able to see answers that the students, uh, plug in up, uh, up on the video board. And, um, you know, those are things that my foreign language teachers have said to me, you know, we want to be able to continue to do that. And, uh, I, I rebutted to them, well, we have Chromebooks. Now, one thing I'll say at the high school is not every classroom has a, a set of Chromebooks. The majority do, but not all. Um, the foreign language teachers did rebut that, uh, you know, the Chromebooks take longer to get set up if you want to use them for an activity such as what I've described. You know, within ten or fifteen seconds, those phones can be working and, and you can be answering, uh, as a class. Um, so, you know, I, I've got to agree. I really think it comes back to enforcement. I think we do have to have consistency from classroom to classroom. And, uh, you know, I, I don't mind saying one bit, you know, it, it's, I don't think it's in doubt that some teachers, um, are sticklers a whole lot more than others when it comes to enforcing the policy. And that is definitely, you know, I think, an issue to be addressed, um, which, which we do, uh, but I think it's definitely something to be a focus. But I myself, I don't see, based upon what I read here, how we can ban phones in the classroom. And it makes me, as I read this, say, how could the pouches be utilized considering how this policy reads? I don't know how they could be.
Well, I wanna, uh, address the pouch just for a second. I, I have retrieved two. And then I hate to say this, and she, I hope she's not watching the video, but my granddaughter is in the sixth grade and she went on TikTok and there are five hundred ways to open these. Just saying. She did it in, she did it in two seconds. Yeah. And then she found, this is terrible, she'll kill me. Robert knows her very well. But, uh, she also found that you can order a magnet to open them on Amazon and it's ninety-seven cents.
I did see that.
Yeah.
So you can buy the magnets and open them for ninety-seven cents.
I know a lot of teachers, not a lot, I know how handled in some areas, that they have something like a shoe bag.
I do that at my school.
Okay.
I've got like a
And it's so, it's much less expensive.
Yeah, I bought them for every classroom. And, and the rule is, it can't be seen or heard. We let them use them in the hallways at class change. They can use them in the cafeteria for breakfast and lunch. And that takes away a lot of the problems that you have if, if a schedule's changed, if a parent needs to pick a child up, whatever. That addresses that. The shoe pouches are hanging in the classroom. They can either put it in there or it can't be seen or heard. And if it's seen, then I don't have a complaint from the parent because they know what the policy is. And when I call them and explain, you know, when they can use them, I really don't have a lot of pushback at all.
What do you think if it was required that they put them in those pouches? Because it seems to me like it's gonna have to be a consistent
Yeah, I haven't really This is how I look at it too. I think about, what do I really want, big picture? We want them to not have their cellphone out while we're teaching instructional. So if I don't see it, we're good. And that means they could keep it, you know, what they're gonna do instead of putting it in the pouch and say they don't have one. And then it'll be in the backpack the whole time. So that kind of addresses both sides. They can either put it in the pouch or they can leave it put away. As long as it's not seen, we're good.
And there was, there was a little, uh, discussion in safety committee. Uh, not this last meeting, but the meeting before. There was a little bit of discussion when we had law enforcement, had Homeland Security and had some others there. There was some discussion about those class change times.
Mm-huh.
Times nobody's watching and using that.
Mm-huh.
Of that being an issue of getting messages out, fights, different things, messaging between the students about some things.
Yeah.
So can't just say that makes
It really does.
That happens at home too.
Yeah.
And at night. And a lot of things bleed into the school day. I mean, we're not able to take it out.
But during the school day when you're worried and, and worried about something happening during the day, if you're in class time, one gets a text, come open this door or
Well, that's, that's a possibility always. Yeah.
You get into that. So that's kind of a double-edged sword.
It is. It is.
I'm, I, I personally would have to do a lot more thinking of which way I would lean towards, whether that being an issue of something of that nature or allowing it to give a little bit
That's almost what it is.
Yeah.
Well, there, there are, you know, situations in schools and, and, you know, I've, I've had it happen in my school this year. Uh, there's an altercation between students and next thing you know, uh, there's video of it going around. And it happens unfortunately. We don't condone that. We absolutely hate that that happens. Looks terrible. Um, a- and so, you know, what you're, what you're describing there is exactly what I'm, what I am as well. Um, but I, I think about, you know, again, just this idea that students have to have access for instructional purposes. Um, I think about the fact that in my building, I have, I'm gonna say twelve to fifteen classrooms, and Mr. Dame Wood might know better. Uh, it, it's somewhere in that vicinity. I have around that number of classrooms that don't have a set of Chromebooks. Well, so if there's no set of Chromebooks and students also do not have access to an electronic device of their own, then we're left with, I cannot access, uh, my assignments in Google Classroom. Uh, there's, there's no, you know, set of Google, uh, of Chromebooks. I can't use my phone to access the classroom. So to me there, i- if, if we're not gonna be able to use them at all in classes, it opens up a situation where I believe we would need to invest in more Chromebooks. Um, and, and that may be doable.
I think you would be, I think you would still be using them during instructional time. Class changes and free time, lunch, stuff like that. I think that was, that, that's where I was going anyway with my statement, was in those time periods.
I, I'm also a little concerned about the fact that students with IEPs and five oh fours, if they're the only ones allowed to have them out, that could be discriminatory in a way. They could be singled out if we're not letting any of the other kids have them out. And they're saying, oh, they have, you know?
Yeah. But
I'm just saying.
There's a disability that there that makes a difference.
There is. There is. But I'm just saying.
He does waive the privacy.
Between the two.
It's like saying.
Yeah, no, they don't get to play TikTok, I wouldn't assume.
Well, no, they shouldn't be.
Candy Crush and all that.
No.
Yeah.
I see that as, uh, it says wireless communication device. I see that as talkers, like some of our students have talkers. That's a wireless communication device. That's how I'm reading that. Not that necessarily they can have a phone, but they're allowed to have their talker as a communication device. It's wireless.
You have to, you have to also remember that in those situations, those students typically are working with a professional one-on-one. They're not, they're not having communications like in the hallway or lunch or whatever. Communication devices are for those students with the, the most significant need.
That's the way I see this, this right here, communication device, 'cause we have students with communication device, but it's not fun. So.
Well, the other one would be like the, the kid with diabetes.
Yeah.
They have to have their cellphone.
Yes. Well, we have instances like that. Yeah, right now.
Mr. Gibby, the man, I'm gonna give you the floor.
Yeah, no worries. I'm, no, not a problem. Not a problem. So I, I will say, I feel like middle school's policy contributes to
My
Ms. Sellers' success. Okay? So we, you know, we've had fifth graders coming to us in the last couple of weeks. And this is a rule, specific rule, that I talk to these fifth graders about when they come and visit middle school on their tour. Okay? And Ms. Parshley can agree 'cause she was there when I talked to the students from Deerfield. Um, but our rule's pretty simple. Phone's gotta be off and it's gotta be put in the locker for the duration of the day. That's it. If it's off and in the locker, there are no problems. Okay? But if it is outside of the locker during the day, or they're on it, using it, whatever, then it's taken up. Uh, and, and so, and then we keep that phone until Friday. So if a phone's taken up on Monday, we keep it till Friday. If it's taken up Friday morning, I call the parents and I say, hey, your child's phone was taken up today. I'm gonna need you to come get it. Okay? And, and so, that's in our handbook. And, and I don't know if you all remember this or not, but I tackled this three years ago when I went to middle school. Okay? Um, it, at the start, there was a lot of pushback. Uh, but since then, I've had very, very little. Okay? And so, phones kept till Friday. We keep, keep it locked up in the office. No one can get to them. They're labeled, all those things. So I wanted They're labeled, all those things, so when a parent comes and signs it out, we have a notebook that we keep up with all of that, and then we know that they're getting their child's phone. Second time, there's a ten day ban, phone's not allowed to come to school for ten days, it's two weeks, right? And so, if they bring it, then there's consequence of ISD, in-school detention, and things of that nature. Third time, phone's banned for the rest of the school year. And so, and I, I've not ever had a student reach that third time yet. Now, yes, I have had a few reach the ten day ban. But when I call parents, you know, I, we just explain what's, what's taking place and how it works. I would say ninety-five percent of the time, parents are okay with it. And to be honest with you, I've had a few parents say, "I'm gonna let you hold on to that phone for a few weeks because I don't want my child to have it, they need to learn a lesson here." And, and so, I'll say, "Okay, it'll be here when you're ready to come get it." And they wind up coming getting it, you know, a few weeks after that. So, but that's how I explain it to our fifth graders who are coming to us as sixth graders for the following year. It's a pretty simple rule, off and in the locker. They do that, there are no problems.
What do you do about instructional time? Are they young enough? No. You would have the same thing as high school.
I do have a few teachers that'll say, "Hey, Dr. Anderson, can we use the phone? If they have a phone, can they use it during class time?" Absolutely you can, you're a professional, you should be able to make that decision. So, you know, most of my teachers have a board or something like that outside their classrooms. They'll write on that board, or they'll give them special instructions the day before. Students bring the phone if they have it with them, they do whatever they're gonna do with in class. And then I know I've had teachers say, "Okay, we're gonna go get these phones put up." And they'll get them put up before the class change, and, and it runs beautifully, right? I mean, it, it works great. So in my opinion, you'd leave that in the professional autonomy of the teacher to be able to say, "Yes, we're using a phone today, no, we're not using a phone today." But we all know that the policy is, it's gotta be locked, turn, you know, in the locker and off. So, and I can say, teachers have been excited about this, hundred percent support this at middle school. They were very excited when we, when we made this move three years ago, so. And it seems to work.
You know, that's, that's, that's an option because you're not completely barring usage.
No.
So you're staying within the law for allowing for instructional time. That, because obviously, looking at the Warren County policy, pretty much lines one through eighteen has just come out.
That's actually strict.
And we just have to, we just have to develop that, and then we will have to move to the back, line sixteen and on, the first offense, second offense, third offense, fourth and above, and address those.
Well, I just feel we need one standard policy for every school, because I don't, I think parents would appreciate that. That they know the, the rules, because I mean, both of those, it's working for both of y'all. But some way or another, if y'all could come up with, in high school, all three of you, that would work for all three schools. Because I think that's, that's the issue with parents, because they got one kid at the high school, one kid at the middle school, maybe one there, and there's all different policies. So if we just had one, that, what about elementary? We didn't hear much from you.
Sounds like you're nicer.
Pardon me?
Sounds like you're nicer.
But it works great, I mean, honestly, because, and if we, if we think about it, you know, the students that I have, you know, I will have to say, when I ask kids that are coming from elementary schools, "How many of you have a cell phone?", like today? When I ask those kids, I'd say ninety percent of them have a cell phone. And then I said, "How many of you take it to school?", probably fifty percent of those kids are taking it to their elementary schools during the day.
And we just require them to have their cell phones off and in their backpack. And it's really not a problem at all. I haven't taken any of this year, but it's just, similar to his, but we don't have lockers off and in your backpack.
But students that I have, honestly, yes, many of them have that tool, but don't know, necessarily know how to use that tool appropriately, right? And by the time they get to Raider Academy and High School, they are older, more mature, they understand a little bit more, "Oh, I, this, this device is actually something that could help me in class," right? I mean, it's not just something, a toy, not something to play on. And unfortunately, that's why I think a lot of our kids at middle school think they have a cell phone, especially our sixth graders. So I think a little more constraint, you know, a little more constraint at the middle school helps as you go further in, in their educational career.
We're starting to train them to be, like I said, responsible adults. They're definitely not adults because I deal with them every day. However, we do, you know, when we do discipline of any type, we try to relate it back to when they become adults, when they're going to be in the real world, when you have a job. I'm not just punishing you for being tardy to class, what happens if you're late to your job? What happens, kind of relate it back and make it relevant. And the same is true with this, we've gotta learn how to use these things appropriately. The tools are available, it's our job to help them learn how to use them appropriately.
So I think the consensus, listening to all three, four people, and Ms. Frida, you can follow everybody. The way I'm understanding it is off and out of sight, unless allowed or needed for instruction, no matter what grades you're in. And then work on offenses. That's basically what I'm seeing.
Well, there's a difference though, because at middle school, you don't have them between classes, they're in their lockers.
That's where they're supposed to be, yes ma'am.
And, and...
And they do, here, at first they do.
Yeah, they do carry them.
In their backpack.
So it's kind of compromising between you two with the off and out of sight, rather than you specifying locker. And, you know, I, I don't know the repercussion or the reasonings that he couldn't in his school enforce that as his off and out of sight means in the lockers.
Right.
Her off and out of sight means...
Now, I don't interpret that way, because if there were, say there was a, a crisis in the school, the kid that has his in his backpack has access to it, or those in the locker don't. To me, putting them in the locker is the same as banning it. Because they don't have access to it all day, you might as well, no, that's the same thing.
We were given, and I can't remember, I can't remember if it was in the safety committee or if it was from the fellow from Warren County, we were given the statistical information about the need for an emergency situation. The statistical information was better that they didn't have them in an emergency situation than actually having them in an emergency situation.
Yeah, and I'm not saying, I wouldn't, but what I'm saying is, that's banning them when you put them in a locker all day. It's the same thing as...
Well, not unless you have an instructional time that he has, you know, and then they say, they arrange for them to go get them out of the locker.
Well, that's the way it is in Warren County.
Take them back, and stuff like that. No, that's what, the way Gibby does it in middle school.
Right.
I will say, I will say this, the rule is for it to be off and in the locker. I would say ninety-seven percent have them in their lockers. I wouldn't say ninety-seven percent have them off. But I, we're not gonna go around and we're gonna, like, we're not gonna, we're not gonna, you know, monitor that, so to speak. So if, if a child goes to their locker, they have access to that phone, right? It's in there. Could they check a message if they chose to do that with their locker? Door covering up what they're doing, yep, a whole lot of them do that, right? But again, it's kind of, are we accomplishing what we need to accomplish here?
What's the big, what do we want in the big picture?
Right, and, and so, I don't know, I, I don't see the locker as it being in the locker as a ban, but that's, that's my opinion, but...
That's the rule.
It is the rule.
That's where they're supposed to be in the lockers, that's the ban. That would be like saying, you know, getting those things, and they still sneak them, sneak them in, you're still banning them, even though they sneak them in.
Well, if they're hanging on the outside of the door, they're still banned. They have, they have no more, I mean, maybe a few steps, depends on where their locker is.
Well, they have it between classes and lunch.
Well, they still have between classes and lunch again, if they want to.
No, no, they don't.
If they, if they open their door and do it, do they get to freely use it?
They can't go to the lunch room and use their phone.
No.
No.
No. There again, then we start talking about some of the safety aspects of it, of those time periods while they're at school, of being able to have outside communication with people, or communication with other people in, within the school. Hey, I know where all the teachers are, you go ahead, and there ends up being another big fight in the bathroom or on the other side.
And I can, I can tell you...
That's the way the safety aspects of it was presented to us.
My, my first year at middle school, it was kind of, kind of out of sight, out, you know, off, off and out of sight. And I had, I, I still had tons of kids with them in their pockets, they had them on, they were doing videos of whatever they were doing. It did not prohibit the distraction in the classroom.
But if the teacher was, if the teacher was enforcing that, then it wouldn't.
Oh, trust me, they were enforcing it. And it was constant, constant that we were having to deal with that. So yes, it was being enforced.
So even if it was enforced, they came back again the next day with them?
Yes ma'am, absolutely.
I mean, that's, something's wrong there if that's happening. What would...
This is what, if I might talk, talking to Chris and I talked to him, they tried all this. And what they found was that it was just too much chaos is the reason why, they're so contented with it. He said, they just, they, they came back to the school and said, let's just do it over, it's too much... Players, you know, in fifty schools, I think, well, they just, they didn't wait for it. The house, you got the house, you didn't wait for it.
But the, the, just to reiterate on that, state law says they can't do that. No.
No.
No, state law, state law says, well, well, they cannot ban them completely. Right, ma'am. So, that's what's making this tough, is it's one of those, like you say, it sounds like the compromise here, along with Warren County and state law, is basically out of, out of sight and off. Unless instructed to for in classroom instruction.
Or it's health, medical, or...
Those items there. And, and that's the reason I said that a while ago about, basically, we're sitting here as a group at off and out of sight unless allowed or needed for instruction, and then offenses. And we can work with Warren County's on that, I think. But it would take removing that lines one through eighteen and starting over. Because you're nineteen through twenty, nineteen through fifteen. Pretty much in line with law and just good jargon in a policy.
If I could, Ms. Katrina Wright, one of the assistant principals of the high school, and I went and visited Warren County High School. I think it's been two and a half, three months ago now. Again, I've lost track of the time, I've got my notes. And we, we were able to talk with Mr. Chris, Mr. Chris Hobbs, the building principal, for probably about three hours. He toured us around the building, he showed us the, the magnets that are used at the exits and entrances, showed us the pouches, and, and discussed, you know, the, the consequences for, you know, violation of, of the policies, which we have here. One of the things that sort of stuck with me, walking around the building, there were two or three teachers that we were able to talk with, not a lot, I mean, class was going on. There, there was one particular teacher that said she thought it had been great, you know, that them having the pouches. It had eliminated issues, in her view. Another teacher out in the hallway, and this was in the presence of the principal, and she was a veteran teacher there, she said, you know, "Let me tell you what I would do." And she said, "Mr. Hobbs, don't get, don't get angry at me for saying this." But she said, you know, "If I were you all, I wouldn't purchase pouches, I would simply say, keep your phone put away." You know, eh, don't get it out, you know, basically enforce your policies. And that was a teacher there suggestion, and again, we just had opportunity to talk with two or three. But, you know, I, I will say, I think the majority of folks appeared to be happy with what they were doing at Warren County. I think at this point, it's just that we are not able to do what they are doing at Warren County. Based upon, you know, the transition in the law.
Don't misunderstand me about using, we have a motion on the floor to use the Warren County, and the easiest thing I'm looking at is striking that whole banning area.
The first part out.
First part out. The, the other pieces would, they need to be in any policy, just to explain legal terms and things of that nature. The offenses doesn't line up with what you're used to, that we probably should take many different ideas from. And like I say again, that, that's just the synopsis I got from what everybody was saying, was basically off and out of sight. Unless instructed otherwise, otherwise. And if, if that is something, if that is something we can move for, I just about forgot what the motion that it on the floor is. It would take, it would take an amendment of such.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Anderson, if a student has a phone in their possession, and it rings or goes off, they're not allowed to answer that, is that phone taken up at that point?
Phone is taken up.
Or actually, when they're actually using it for something, or just when it goes off, or it rings, or dings, or whatever it might do?
If it's out of their locker, it's taken up, whether it's on or off.
Ms. Angela, what about yours?
Mine in class, if it is, goes off, if it's seen or heard, is the policy, then it's taken up. Unless they are specifically doing some instructional activity that is approved by me to use the phone.
Okay, thank you.
So y'all are kind of lining up there on this, or punishment of it.
We don't keep the phones overnight, though, we give the phones back every night.
Well, we're, we're giving and taking a little here and putting together one, one sheet for Ms. Frida.
No, not for me, I think, I think it'd be easier for parents.
Putting together one policy, you know, that...
Right.
And, and, and that's a good idea, and another good aspect of that is because they're gonna know this policy from the time they're kindergarten until they're twelfth grader.
I agree.
So you can't say you didn't know.
That's right.
One thing that I noticed with respect to the enforcement of the policy and the consequences for violation of the policy, I know, Ms. Frida, you had commented that, you know, it would be best to have consistent consequences across the board from one school to another, and, and I don't disagree with that at all. But one thing I would point out is that there are some consequences that we might have at the high school that Mr. Anderson doesn't have at his school, and vice versa. I know, Ms. Sellers, Ms. Sellers and I have lunch detention as a consequence that is utilized prior to students missing a whole day of class within school detention. I don't...
We have a salad lunch, we have a salad lunch.
Okay, so you have that.
I think Dr. Anderson has that statement.
Yeah, we have a salad lunch, we do.
I did not realize that, okay. Well, then that's not an issue.
No.
It's not an issue.
We have lunch detention, we have lunch detention in school detention, yeah.
So I think we're closer than we actually think.
Not, not...
Ms. Bev, Ms. Gary?
I like the idea of personally putting them in their locker, I really like that. When they came from Warren County and talked to us, one of the things they talked about was school culture. And that not having the phones between classes, not having them in the lunch period. The kids were actually talking to each other and getting to know each other. And it said it changed, the kids actually began to come to them and thank them because they now were developing healthy relationships. And so if we still leave them out at lunch, if we still leave them out in the hallways, that's not gonna develop, because they're gonna come out of the classroom, I mean, we're talking addiction here. Literally, we're talking addiction, I know, because I put my phone, I know what it is. So they're gonna come out of that classroom in a panic and doing whatever, if they have to, between class to try to read that phone, and at lunchtime, they're gonna try to catch up. And it's gonna defeat any purpose we have for climate change. So that's just my opinion.
I wasn't laughing at you, I read an article yesterday, I'll be making, it made me laugh, where Rutherford County said that the cell phone ban or the policies of banning the cell phones would increase violence in their... the cell phone ban or the policies of banning the cell phones would increase violence in their schools because the kids had to talk to each other and they'd fight more. And I can guarantee you that is a misconception.
I think so.
When they have to get out from behind the phone or the keyboard, stuff's a lot different when the bell rings at three o'clock and you got to answer for it.
Uh, another thing that I noted at Warren County, um, with, with the, the current ban that they have on the phones, um, you, you know, practice schedules change. Uh, there are all sorts of announcements that sponsors for career and technical programs, that coaches, that band director, choir director, those are just some of our extracurriculars. Uh, folks are able to send out messages to their team, their organization, if something changes, uh, within their program for the day currently at the high school. But at Warren County, what they have is lots of, just lots of intercom type announcements, whereas everybody in the building's getting those. Um, I, I don't think any of us would say that that's not a disruption. You know, it might apply to ten or fifteen kids, but everybody's getting it. Um, but, but it's just, that's one of those things that goes along with it. Twenty years ago, that's how we got announcements.
Whether, whether it's our, it's social media, or our department sending out messages, it's still a distraction.
A- absolutely.
On that part, don't tell that. That would cause it just as much.
Prater, when you and I were in high school, Prater, you remember when you and I were in high school and Mr. Patch would say, uh, excuse me, I'm going to be making an announcement at the end of the period?
Yeah, you can get like that.
So you need to run twice.
Before the period ended and say, please, Jesus interruption, I have an announcement at the end of the period.
Those were the good old days.
Get Mr. Daywood to go ahead and get Mr. Parsley a wireless microphone in his office.
But we hear all this crackling, you know.
Mr. Parsley, the, the majority, I don't know how I'm going to address it, of your students have backpacks?
I would say half or maybe a little less. And again, that's just based upon observing students coming in on a day-to-day basis, have a backpack. We have six hundred and fifty lockers in our building. Um, you know, w- we did have plenty of lockers for every student and then some. Of course, we, we added some classrooms a few years ago. And what were those locker spaces? And, uh, those classrooms were needed, still are. Um, but what we had found back during that time is that, that very few students used a locker. We would, our homeroom teachers assigned those at the start of the year. And they, they just, I mean, basically, they collect trash. And I mean, a significant number of them, a milk carton, you know, so, uh, uh, candy wrappers, things like that. Now, there are a few students that use those lockers. Um, again, we have six hundred and fifty lockers in our building. At the start of the year, our homeroom teachers ask every student, who would like to have a locker, who will use a locker? And this year, we distributed less than fifty lockers. Um, so it, it's not, you know, we're, we're making effort to have them used.
And really, the school, the school's so big, if they have a class here, it's hard for them to get to their lockers.
Mine carry them in backpacks.
They don't know what they're missing with the locker. That's a perfect place. Stuff, stuff.
So-
Put all your work in there. At the end of the year, if you was missing a paper and it didn't get caught, you'd go back to your locker and dig it out.
One, one thing, uh, well, a cou- couple of things that, that, um, come into play these days. Um, there are some classes for which you have a classroom set of textbooks. Student doesn't take a book home every day, or doesn't take a, a book to a locker every day. Um, now with our core classes, for most of them, you have a, a physical textbook. We also have classes that have online textbooks. And so when you consider all this, there are just not nearly as many things that you would put in the lockers there might have been, you know, when we were in school.
See, I, I would, I would have loved for there to have been an off and out of sight unless allowed or needed for instruction. However, my kids apparently did well enough that they got done with their instruction early enough. And all day, every day, I was threatening to come up to the school and take their phone from them because they, what are you doing? Hey, what are you doing? Well, what are you doing? Well, I got done with my work.
Yeah.
Good to go. Don't bother me. As I don't expect them to be bothering other students either, fumbling with their phone.
I think too, another, I don't know, another aspect about middle school, they are required to keep everything in their locker. Right? They are not allowed to carry backpacks around with them, just, you know, like they do at Red Academy and High School. So that locker is their home, so to speak, for the school day. So everything is required to be in there.
With the, the expanse of our building, um, there are some, some hall changes, some students that might have a hall change from, uh, down near the end of the building where driver's education is located or ROTC is located. If they're going up to the English department or the science department, it's a full five-minute walk. Um, if you, if you're going to the restroom, you're not going to get there in five minutes. Uh, and you can't slow walk if you're going to get there. Um, when you consider that, if, in the fact that our lockers are all in the, generally the same area. Um, if a student's not walking that route, going to your locker, you know, makes the hall change that much longer.
Sure. One other thing that, talking on my end is that, I would, if y'all can remember, there was like forty-five to fifty dicks in our, in the apartment, that is, still remember that power plant?
Yeah.
If you're still using it for educational purposes, what do you, do you do, do Facebooks and all of that, and it comes through, are you using it for educational?
Chances are, I'm going to speak and say the app. Probably the app or whatever.
Depends on which app they're using. If they're using the one where they answer the questions in the, you know, they do it like a quiz on the board. Kahoots was, was one that we use. Nothing else comes through at that time. So the app can block it out. But if they're just doing like a Google search or something like that, I'm sure it wouldn't block it out.
Right.
It depends on what they're using it for.
That would be a, that-
Anything that Chris, and there's, boy, there's, I liked that I talked to the, the student.
Well.
And it was one of the power plants, is the amount of dicks that, if dicks is probably going to die without it.
I understand that.
And if you're using it as educational, you're still going to get, and, and, and really, you get bored.
The only way you can combat that, you can't combat it with this law or this policy. But the wa- the only way you can combat that is via the instruction that we're allowing to use. You'd basically say you can't use instruction like that anymore. Because if we go as far as the law says we can go, which is off and out of sight unless allowed or needed for instruction, that's as far as we can go with the policy of these devices. However, on the flip side, the only place you could go is into instruction to limit that opportunity.
That's right.
Am I right?
But I think so. I don't think we can go that, as far as saying a total ban based on what the law is now. Do you?
No, no. And I think that's as far as we can go with this policy, is just out of sight and all.
I do too.
Mr. Hansard, I agree with what you're saying. If, if, if the phone is not being used for some instructional purpose, uh, some sort of app that might be instructional, uh, and the phone's just laying out on a desk and it's turned on, you, you're exactly right. I mean, that's a legitimate concern.
Well-
I think that was something that, that was a great issue.
I think it goes back to enforcement again, though, in my opinion, you know, as a teacher for a long, I was a teacher for twenty-five years before I became a principal. This will be the year thirty-nine, end of year thirty-nine for me. And I think it all goes back to the teacher enforcing the rules in the classroom and, uh, having those tough discussions with those as administrators and letting them know what our expectations are. And that all shows through in the end, when you get test scores and when you get, uh, we can pull our discipline data and show you how our discipline is. All those things show in how we make sure our folks are doing what they're supposed to.
So the consensus, if we, if we followed through with a, with a policy, kind of like we're, we're talking about here with these aspects of off and out of sight, see what, how that goes.
Okay.
Is that the way, I'm kind of, see how that goes. If we start seeing interruption, if we, with increased instructional usage.
Right.
Then we might-
Have to go back.
Look at that. But we'd have to look at that through a different policy because this policy-
Well, I feel like too, like Dr. Powell alluded to earlier, once TSBA comes out with some kind of a, something we can use to go by, until then, we're kind of going out on a limb.
Well, when you're saying off and out of sight, if they get them out between classes, is that-
Well, I, I mean, that's what I do now. I don't know what-
I mean, if you, they see them in the hallway, was it open?
They can use them.
They can do that.
So see, off and out of sight is different from, from school to school.
Do what now?
See, if we say off and out of sight, they, theirs, they have theirs.
Between classes at lunch.
Middle school's only one, so it's not consistent.
We-
Well, but you're not necessarily, you would be backing off a locker, potentially. But you would only be, you would only be turned off, you're still putting them in the back of the doors.
When they're in class. When they're in class. She's talking about like between classes and during lunch.
Yeah.
So I let them have them now.
Do, do, do you, do y'all utilize lockers?
No, they don't.
No, I didn't, I couldn't remember if you did or not.
Do you have issues at, with, with them having it out at lunch?
No, I haven't. I mean, some honestly did.
Our students are allowed to, uh, utilize their phones at lunch. They are, in hallways. They are.
And I can tell you there will be issues at middle school. There will be. There will be. If they used them at lunch. There will be issues at lunch.
I want to agree.
Just because I, be- because, because our students are not mature enough, um, to be able to-
They don't have them at lunch. They have them in their backpack.
Yeah.
Often in their backpack, which is, backpacking is major.
You know, I want to, I want to agree, but I-
But that's a ban. I mean, we're, we're banning in one school and we're not in others. That's, I mean, we do it one and-
Well, it's a matter of how we do it. If, if we look at the way we read that just a second ago, it's a little give and take between the two of where they put them and how they do it.
No, it's banned. They don't have theirs any time during the day.
If they don't have instructional time, or they don't need them for instruction, then yes, it's a ban and it's supposed to be by law.
But what I'm saying is, is, is they're not completely banned at, at high school and not-
No, so we're going to have to, that's what we're trying to do, is develop a policy that would eliminate that.
Right. And he's saying that it won't work at middle school. That they can't have them during, between classes and lunch.
Well, he just hasn't put them in their locker because they utilize their lockers there.
Yeah, but they don't have them. That is, they cannot use them in, during, during between classes.
That's where we're going to have to get and decide.
To make a decision.
We're going to have to make a decision in these grades if we're going to or not with this policy.
Right, right. And that's what I'm saying. That's why it's going to be so com- you know.
Yeah.
In my opinion, it's got to be consistent.
I mean, the law, the law does say ban, but it don't say ban.
Right.
You still have the opportunity and teacher and principal discretion to use them at certain times. Therefore, it's not a complete ban, but yes, because they can't get up and go to their locker and get their phone, or they're leaving them there during the day, then you could call that a ban, but it's technically not because they still are allowed to go get them, use them for certain instructional periods that are needed.
Well, that, that's the same as Warren County.
No.
Yeah, they can use theirs, their, the only thing time they can use theirs is instructional.
I don't think so, can they? Because they'd have to go get the magnets.
They don't even use theirs for instruction.
This is the reason why they did away with that, because there's so many barriers.
And they don't use them for instruction or anything.
They don't use them for anything.
But they can't, they can't do away with that. They're changing theirs right now. Because law, they cannot make policy to supersede law.
They have to change it.
They, they have to based upon this. So the, the, what, what we observed is that the magnets are located at the entrances, exits. And, and teachers do not have a magnet in their classroom. Now, are there some students that might have one hidden away? I'm sure. Um, s- but they're not able to use them in classrooms as, as it is currently because this, they don't have magnets to open the, the, the pouches quickly to do that.
The only thing they have is the, uh, in depth, and they don't have the magnets that they lay at the back. That's the only thing that the, the disabled use to have help, those who have to use them. They're hoping their phone is there for instructional or for health reasons, or to check their blood sugars, or anything like that. Everybody else has to use all magnets.
And back to your point on, uh, that being looked at upon as discrimination. If the state's mandating it, the state's putting it in the law.
That's true.
We're out of that.
Yeah, I understand.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Come on up, Mr. Ballard, her talk.
The thing that Mr. Trump was saying is, is important is consistency.
Yeah.
And I think that what they're doing in middle school, you got consistent enforcement policy because when you're out there, you know, using them, and, and they'll always be green classes, and having them put back in, you're, it's hard to enforce that. There, it makes it, you know, if you violate that policy, then your cell phone is taken away, so it's consistent. And, you know, you just got to have a consistent policy throughout the school. But I think that it falls towards that. Because it's easy to enforce because if you violate, it's pretty obvious.
And tools, tools and apparatuses allow for that. Lockers.
But I want to say one thing, Mr. Ballard. Um, ours isn't hard to enforce either, because if it's out, it's taken. So it's the same thing. It's just that we allow them to have them in the hallway, so, and in the lo- in the cafeteria.
So you have to also remember, middle school has locker access. The next two stages in development, if they do not have locker access, so.
I have locker access, they just don't use it.
It sounds to me like enforcement is the key. No matter what, what the policy is.
I agree. That's, it's only, the law's only as good if it's enforced.
You got to, you got to look at tools that are available to each school and find a common sense approach. Uh, off and out of sight is easy to say. We could consider your backpack or your pocket as a locker.
I agree.
I agree.
Off and out of sight. Uh, any one of those locations. Uh, one thing we'd have to do is, part of this policy would be period. Unless it's instructional, if that's the way we want to go. Unless it's used for instructional purposes, period. Off and out of sight or we're taking it up.
Mm-hmm. Does that mean hallway and lunch too?
The way I would un- that's the way I would interpret it.
It's pretty vague here, but I, 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 that's the way I would lean based upon this vague policy.
Yeah.
We would hope it's going to be more specific.
Everywhere in the building.
That's the way I would, I would, and that, that's the best of both worlds. You kind of use whatever tools and mechanisms as principles you have in your school, whether it be lockers, backpacks, pockets, whatever, it's just period.
Can't be seen or heard.
Off and out of sight.
During instructional time or the whole day?
The whole day.
The whole day, unless needed an instructional, instructional idea. That's, that's the way, is that the way I'm following there? We threw so many things out.
That is a consistent policy and it deals with the chance for the kids to know each other, which is real big for me.
And that's critically important, the interaction.
Mr. Parsley? Ms. Angela, you, you have any problem if we go to out of sight, out of mind, not using them during lunch and or hallways?
I don't have a problem with the policy I have now. I don't have any problems from parents or students. Um, I don't see that it's caused any extra, uh, disciplinary issues for me to allow the students to use those during class change and in the cafeteria. Uh, if I had seen a big increase, because I pull my discipline numbers at the end of every year and look to see if there's problem areas and, and things like that, I have not. So I, I, I like the policy I currently have. It's easy for us to enforce. I have teachers that enforce it. And I feel like, I feel like it's not a problem for me. But I can see how you think it might be. I, I still say that a lot of our cell phone issues aren't necessarily at school. They're in society when they get home and they're on them for hours and hours and hours that we can't control. Uh, I'm still back to my belief that it's important that we teach them appropriate use of the device. That's what I think.
Uh, go ahead.
Well, I, I do think there's lots of merit to working with students to, to hopefully teach them how to appropriately use their device. Uh, once they're out of high school. Um, I think lots of us would readily admit that we, we have a problem with it. uh, once they're out of high school. Um, I think lots of us would readily admit that we, we have a problem with it. I, I'll say that I have a problem with it personally. I mean, you know, it's, it's, it is addictive. There's no question. Um, you know, in a perfect world, students can have their phone, they can have it on, and there's never gonna be any disruption unless it's something that really is important. But that's just not the world we live in.
I think the purpose of, of this polishing the law dealt with instruction.
I do too.
You know, and you're not dealing, if you've got, you're under control during instructional time, that's part of the reason this was put in place.
I agree.
It wasn't to take phones away from students. It was to keep from disrupting instructional time.
Well, I think that, I'm sorry. I think it's important too that we have the mental health part in our school. We're very big on that. That's another issue with, with society, issues that we have that brought, are brought into the school. We have a teen health council. We, uh, train every one of our students in mental health first aid the first semester of school. Uh, we try to give them the tools they need. I, I feel very strongly that it's my responsibility as an administrator to help these students learn or have the tools and the resources they need to become successful and productive citizens. So, to me, banning this completely from the school day is not necessarily the answer to all the problems we're talking about today. Sorry, I interrupted.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Ms. Garner a question because I, I've got a feeling, I mean, there's no way we're gonna be, even if we went with, with this policy on the, and deleting the top section and coming back through with kind of the consensus we talked about, but is there any way that some of the things that we were presented in, I think it was two, maybe two ago, on the, uh, safety committee from Homeland Security about? Yes, yes, it was after that. And the, the concerns about this because that is a lot that's behind this bill, not just talking about instructional time interruption, was also about school safety during the day. And the connection of the outside world because if I'm not mistaken, I believe the ANIOC incident that happened at ANIOC, there was a lot of traffic between students inside of the building at the time and the actual person letting them know what was, where to come, how to get in and all that good stuff, how to do that. So, there's, there's more than just, I mean, you know, I've got, I've got a bunch of employees. I've got almost four hundred myself in this community. No phones. My foreman's, as my principals would, that's it. But I don't catch nobody on their phones, period. That's part of your learning because I respected what you said right off the very first when we come in here. I want to be as lenient as possible, but also I'm not gonna turn a blind eye to safety. And I know nobody in this room would. And the need to learn of self-control, of I can't do that now, or I can do that now, and this and that. And that goes for administrators as well, being stern, dead fat. And so, that, that's kind of, that's kind of where I'm at is, I'm, I'm a fan of the out of sight, out of mind. Use any tool you can all day long unless instruction calls for it. That's just me. Uh, there's many of y'all that vote in this. That's where we are, but either which way, I, I don't see how we can ever accomplish the wording.
Complete ban.
No. Well, that's still, that's not a complete ban. Yes, we'll have to take this out. And I don't know how we're gonna develop that wordage, wordage, wordage today.
I don't know, but we could look at what we already have in place in policy. Um, and I, I don't know exactly. We, we do have one because that's how middle school has their policy put in place because it is in our handbook. Um, it's under electronic devices. And, and so, that might be a place to start.
That's fine, but all of our policies come vetted from TSBA, and that's what we pay them for, and that's what we do with. And, and, you know, once again, you're, you're putting that legal ramification on somebody else rather than us. And, you know, that goes from developing this whole first part, even if we did take the Warren County, making sure we got it right because we're gonna have to send it to TSBA to see if they'll stand behind it and even vouch for it anyways and vet it. And make sure it's okay. So, we're, like I say there again, we're right back to the point of trying to recommend, trying to recommend to TSBA to help us develop that policy. With the recommendations we've come up with in this meeting.
Is this a TSB attorney that said that Warren County definitely had to change theirs and that Jennifer White? Okay.
That was Jennifer White, and she is the staff attorney for TSBA.
Well, I, I just wanna make one comment. Uh, schools should not be jail cells. And, uh, we've got to think in terms of that also. Uh, phones are part of our society. Uh, I mean, even kids, they know each other. They know each other through, I mean, we don't like it, but they know each other through TikTok. They know each other through Snapchat. That is their way of communicating, and I don't think we're gonna change that.
That was my point. Yeah, I'm not sure we can, as a school, change that.
No, and I, and I am all for phones not being out during instructional time.
Me too.
And, and I know that they can be a problem possibly for somebody bullying somebody, but if it's not out in the class time, that's gonna limit it. And, but we just, you know, it, it, it's just hard to, for me, to, to be that hard-nosed. And, uh, and I know it would be, I know it would be better for everybody if we could just throw them out the door, but that's over with.
Well, it'd be better out in the work world too, but.
I mean, even, I mean, it's sad, but.
It happens every day.
That's our communication tool now. And I, and just like in real estate, no one talks to me.
Otherwise, I'm gonna break mine's fingers.
Well, just like.
They don't leave me alone during the school day.
But for instance, in real estate, no one answers the phone. I'm the only, I think I'm one of the few left that actually talks.
They want to.
It's sad that they text, and, uh, and it's the younger agents. They will not talk. You know, if you text them, you'll get an answer. If you call, nothing. And I don't know how, you know, I think it's too late to turn, to turn anything around.
Coffey County Board of Education, policy six point three one two, uh, issued six nine of twenty fourteen, use of personal communication devices and electronic devices. Students may possess personal communication devices and personal electronic devices so long as such devices are turned off and stored in backpacks, purses, or personal carryalls. Such devices include, but are not limited to wearable technologies such as eyeglasses, rings, watches that have the capability to record, live stream, or intact with wireless technology, cell phones, laptops, tablets, iPods. However, a principal designated may grant permission for the use of these devices to assist with instruction, and teachers are encouraged to integrate the devices into their coursework. Unauthorized use or improper storage of a device will result in confiscation until such time as it may be released. A student in violation of this policy is subject to disciplinary action.
And that's in our handbook, Mr. Chair.
That's our policy.
That's, that's how, how we develop.
Out of sight, out of mind, all day unless they're used for instruction. That is our policy since twenty fourteen. So.
I think one thing you need to look at is, is the, what are your penalties gonna be? Which, some of you already have some, of course, but that may be something we need to look at, at, to be consistent with the system wide. If you get caught with it the first time, second time, third time, whatever it may be, you may be able to use some of these Warren County, uh, situations to develop that. But it looks to me like that, that you can, our policy now, they're prohibited for the most part, but you haven't, really haven't set any guidelines for punishment, I guess.
Right, right. That's where, that's where I had, I had wrote down, I wrote on everything. Uh, offenses, yeah, are out of, out of sight, out of mind with whatever tool you can use to keep them out unless you need them for instruction, and then are offenses. And our policy six point three one two is almost exactly what we were talking about, or I just said, that could interject between lines one through nineteen of the Warren County policy. Yeah, our six point three one two and their six point three one two. Right, insert this, our six point three one two into lines one through eighteen. Remove those from Warren County, insert ours into it, and then we can turn this, this discussion over to offenses. Right? Am I, am I?
You're right.
Yeah. So, that would require, which obviously we know that Warren County has to have the two things, the two amendments anyways. We know that.
It really should be three.
Yeah, it, the other one is, there is three down here at the bottom, Robert. There's, uh.
I'm still digging through paperwork.
It's on the first page of the House bill at the bottom.
That's, that's, yeah, that's what we kept referring to earlier.
That's what we were referring to.
Yeah, teachers may allow students, yes. So, there would be, there would be two, you need to amend this by two. You need to add that one in here, and we need to take Coffey County's existing six point three one two and interject it into the Warren County policy between lines one through eighteen. Am I reading that right? Did y'all catch that here? Sorry, buddy. You're, you, you made your motion, alright, but it needs to be amended to include a line of, teachers may allow a student to use a device for educational purposes during instructional time. As well as taking the current Coffey County Board of Education's six point three one two policy and transposing it onto this Warren County policy between lines one through eighteen.
I have a, a question.
Okay.
Um, one of the sentences in the current policy states something to the effect of integrating use of the device into instruction.
Encouraged to integrate.
Encouraged, so I guess my question is, how do we feel about that?
Or do we want it to have approval of some sort? You know, not, not just give free rein to pull them out in the classroom, so to speak?
But remember, this policy was developed in when?
Fourteen. No, actually twenty eleven.
That's a long time ago.
A lot's changed.
No, but it's been reviewed every year.
Yeah, but a lot of it's changed.
If it was reviewed, though.
No, but. And see, this is the word that's here he's talking about. Teachers are encouraged to integrate the devices into their coursework.
No, see, that's.
Yeah.
That was when they were more or less a useful tool.
Alright, you're gonna have to help me write this motion.
Um, so, I put adopt Warren County's policy six point three one two, adding in the changes provided by TSBA. Teachers may allow a student to use a device for educational purposes during instructional time. Students may use a device in emergency or manage their health. Students may use devices included in their IEP five oh four or individual learning plan, striking out Warren County's one through eighteen and, and embedding Coffey County's six point three one two.
Minus Coffey County's six point three one two, minus if that's the consensus, striking, teachers are encouraged to integrate the devices into their coursework.
Yeah, I think that would.
I think that's already happening. I, I think that'd be acceptable to, to strike.
Yeah, I think that's acceptable, yes.
What, when you're talking about emergencies, Melissa, we might need to define what those are. Um, that was one thing they said when they did the thing from Warren County was if kids during, like a shooter type situation, if kids are trying to get on their phone, get ahold of their parents, they're not listening to instruction, and that becomes a safety issue.
Right.
So, we need to define emergency.
Immediate, immediate health issues is what they meant. When Warren County, he said immediate health issues.
So, we probably need to define that as immediate.
When it comes to, when it comes to the, I think that was number two that we amended. Yeah, students may use a device in an emergency or to manage their health. I think that took care of it. So, I think the way the amendment was read, I think that takes care of that, emergency and or.
One, one thing to consider is students that have a individual health plan. Generally, there would be verbiage, uh, in their plan stating that they would use their device to.
It'll spell it out specifically.
I think what Ms. Beth's getting at and what we're leaning at is like an emergency health, or a health emergency. You might have a heart attack and the kid, kid's walking by, got their phone in their backpack, and they need to dial nine one one ASAP.
I hope they do.
Can I just do it?
Yeah.
I'm more concerned.
But without stating it, it, it still leaves it open. Okay, we've got a shooter situation. Every kid's getting them out of their backpack and calling mama, and.
Regardless of how hard we try to preach things that we've heard about those situations, and it's just like, you know, I think we were talking one day about how you get the kids out of the high school if something went down and this and that, and contain them till you know who you got, what you got, and all this with that parking lot full of cars. You're not stopping them. There's gonna be people going, you, you. Yeah, they're gonna call, run.
Are we looking now at nothing in between classes, cafeteria?
That's the way the current policy reads.
The, the current policy reads as such. So, if that's, unless we're changing that.
Well, we struck, teachers are encouraged to integrate the devices into their coursework. We struck that out. You're to that point, right? Okay, so now we're to the point of if y'all wanna do anything about that.
What does it say about that, Robert? Read it one more time.
Nothing. It just says that they, uh, out of sight and out of mind.
Okay.
Unless the teacher integrates it.
Into instruction.
In instruction, yeah. Unauthorized use or improper storage of the device will result in compensation or confiscation until such time as it may be released. A student in violation of this policy is subject to disciplinary act.
What about their smartphones? I mean, their smartwatches.
They're listed in here too. Cell phones, laptops, tablets, iPods. Well, it doesn't say nothing about watches. Well, yeah, it does, or watches that have the capability to record, live stream, or interact with wireless technology.
Okay, so those have to be all the two.
I think you can go ahead and, and at this point in time, address the policy, and then.
We can tweak that.
Set your, set your, um, offenses up a little bit later on before school starts.
Well, if we take this policy, we're gonna take their offenses. But if we're gonna readdress this top section of our old policy, we can also address offenses then as well.
Okay.
If we wanna lighten up, stiffen up.
But what I understand, if we accept it now, it's banning, basically.
Right.
So, that's something you gotta consider.
Hey, Frida, your policy from twenty eleven, ban them.
That's what we're saying. We wanna amend that.
See, we already gotta ban them.
Like the second offense is, we don't have an after-school detention.
Well, this does.
Right.
The state law does not give you the ability.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
State law does not give you the ability to allow them to have them in between classes and at lunch.
It doesn't, but it does.
No, no, not instruction.
I agree. I agree. I, I think when you look at the, the current policy, that it's still not been approved, correct? But it's, we expect that to be approved.
What you're looking at right there is the state law, the House bill. If you come right down, it's forty nine, it's the amendment to forty nine six dash. What you're looking at right there is the state law, the House bill, if you come right down, it's forty-nine, it's the amendment to forty-nine six dash three. That is state law, big state law.
I, I, the way I interpret this, I think you're correct.
Yeah.
Um, it, it does not give permission to allow students to use them between classes, lunch.
If it doesn't give permission, then it's...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why even discuss it if we can't do it?
That's right.
I don't, I didn't think it was discussing.
What will they pass tomorrow?
I didn't think, I didn't think we was discussing if we was gonna allow that.
Is there an expectation that this bill be clarified, that there be more detail in it anytime soon, or is this what it's gonna be?
Probably till next year.
Yeah.
So really, really, there's, there's no point...
Wait a minute, who is our legislative representative? Who is our legislative delegate?
Send me down there, I'll take your...
I think you're supposed to be going anyway, ain't you, ain't you the, ain't you the... Yeah, you're the legislative liaison for the board.
No, all I get is, is seminars, they send me what's happening, they don't ask my opinion.
I think if you wanted, I think if you wanted to address Mr. Parsley, Ms. Sellers' concern, you could put a comment in there, something similar to, uh, principal discretion of where it could be, where cellphones could be...
Well, we can't do that, cause if I was saying we can't...
The law doesn't provide for it.
That's what we're saying. Unless they change it.
Just look, just, just looking over real quickly, the only thing I see in the, uh, offenses guideline would be in second offense, basically they're talking about assigned either two days of, of after-school detention or one week lunch detention. We have lunch detention, the same thing at the bottom of that, they have two days of A S D, E L six, or one week in lunch.
We can change it, A S D to I S, or...
Yeah, I S D really doesn't come in until the third offense, that's in school suspension. Uh, the only thing I see right now is number two, look at those, if you've got those where you, is the in school sus, is the after-school detention or the, uh, E L six, I don't know what E L six is.
There's page two.
So basically, all we're la, are gonna be allowed to do is come up with the offense, you know,
consequences.
Consequences for it, because the state is determining that we can't use them at all during the day.
Except for, except for instruction.
After-school detention, which we don't have.
Yeah, yeah, you're right, I mean, pretty much they, they tied your hands on that.
So, we don't, you know, we can't get...
But it doesn't say, the state says, the state doesn't say they can't have them in their pocket or in their backpack. The state doesn't say that. State just says they must stay there unless they're instructed.
And also I might wanna look at when you think, I'm sorry.
Well, one thing, one thing I wanna make, hey, guys, we're, and girls, we're getting a policy started here. This is, this can be still, this, we can still meet deadlines, guidelines, we can still have impl, implementation, we can still make changes as we find out more information. We are still waiting on some more T S B A questions and answers and things of that nature. We can get by with, with waiving a second reading. Once the board looks to get this implemented before the first of the year so that we can roll. What we say today is not necessarily what it's gonna kick off with come first of the school year next year.
And I think the, the Tennessee School Board and the law doesn't put in here what your offensive guidelines will be, so that's something...
No, it just says you must have them.
So our policy is really up to date except for that. Except for that part about encouraging use of them in the classrooms.
And you might, you might wanna look at in your, in your offenses, um...
Yeah, the offenses, but your agreement to rules and policy that was in Warren County. Uh, that's pretty good about painting a definite picture of, look, don't abuse this.
Yeah.
And we'll allow, you know what I'm saying, it's, it's just good jargon. Uh, uh, agreeing to the offenses, if you're caught in violation of them, uh, those are pretty good. Uh, examination of cellphones is a new thing that if a school principal in, in the Warren County, starting at line nineteen...
I'm not sure we have all the pages. We're missing page two.
We're missing some of what you have.
We're missing page two.
This is the Warren County Board of Education, it's just two.
Yeah, we just have this.
Oh, sorry, it might not have run the backside.
It didn't run the backside, it's okay.
Yeah, we don't have all...
I can pass it around. But the examination of cellphones, electronic communication devices. If the school principal or his or her designated has reasonable suspicion that a cellphone, personal communication device or camera is used in violation of this policy, the principal and/or its administrator may review the history of the cellphone.
So that's, that's illegal.
Yeah, we can't do that.
That's the one that's pulling out. So not, that's what was nineteen through... Nineteen through twenty-six was illegal, that got took out.
See, and they're gonna have to revise all that.
I had to let Frida see too. No, that's the second page. There, see that one?
So, Mr. Chair, would it be acceptable for the three of us to get together and, and talk about what those consequences need to be and...
And maybe just bring them to you all to discuss?
I think, I think, uh, how about we, how about we, we, we are gonna have to, we are gonna have to cut that out.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Which one?
So you took mine and I took yours.
Twenty through twenty-six.
You gave me yours.
No. I wrote on yours.
I wrote on yours too.
He's writing on everybody's.
Yeah.
But I, but, and I know...
But on this, we got to the point that we were at offenses.
Yeah.
But we've now just realized that nineteen through twenty-six are gonna have to be stricken.
They gotta be gone as well, right.
And it also needs to have added in here that one sentence that, um, in the event of emergency, that all call will be...
He got that on number, the second amendment, number two amendment.
Okay.
So there's four amendments, there's one motion, and four amendments so far, five. This just made five, striking line, uh,
Twenty-three, twenty-six.
Nineteen through twenty-six.
Yes.
Striking those from the policy. Uh, made number five.
Okay.
Amendment number five.
Jesus.
Okay, I'm, I'm getting confused again. When you go back to this, it says, "Except as provided in subdivisions prohibits a student from using a wireless communication device during instructional time."
B two through four. So you start at B, which is here, and out to two through four.
But it just says instructional time, it doesn't say the school day.
Right, so that means they cut the school day out. But if you're allowed to at instructional time, you're allowed to in the event of emergency or to manage their student's health, and then number four is going back.
But it says prohibits a student from using it during instructional time, it doesn't say anything about prohibiting a student from using it at lunch.
No, I, I think, I think, yeah, but I think you're kinda clouding, I think you're kinda clouding.
Which, which area?
They do that on purpose, I think.
Right here, uh, if you look at, at the House bill, nine thirty-two.
Line what?
Ha, House bill.
Oh, yeah, I got it.
Right down there at the bottom, it says, "E, each local board of education and each public charter school governing body shall adopt and implement a wireless communication device policy that, one, except as provided in subdivisions B two through four, prohibits a student from using a wireless communication device during instructional time." Does it say during the school day?
Well, that, when is it, what is the definition of instructional time?
Well, that's what we'll have to find out, because we're gonna have a flat.
Yep, that's right.
If this is not, if it says during the school day...
We need a definition.
We need to define instructional time.
Yeah, instructional time.
And it's, and it says authorizes a teacher to allow student to, to use it, you know, during instructional time, and it, but it's talking about instructional time, what's instructional time, is that from seven forty-five to three fifteen?
I don't know.
Or is it just during class time?
It's, instructional time will be class time to me.
That's what I'm thinking.
But I don't know what the legal definition is.
I mean, I was thinking that we had it made because they decided, of course, but I'm not sure now. Cause it just says instructional time.
So, I'll work this up. I'll just work this up, they can send me their offenses and the next time they...
Well, let's, let's get a, let's get this, let's get this closed out if we're going to, and then develop offenses.
Yes.
Research instructional time.
Yes.
Look at the top section again. But at least we'll have one document instead of a whole stack of stuff here.
So...
Yes. Uh, May, you're talking about Monday night?
Tuesday.
Yeah, next week?
No.
No, I don't think it would.
We would have to meet again before that.
Yeah, we would have to meet again before that. Waive the second reading. Yeah, what date is that? In time for school, you'd be able to get it in pamphlets and whatever and all that.
Our policy was, is, was more, uh, strict than this.
No, that's if you, if, that's if you're interpreting the instructional time as just while the teacher's speaking. So it may not be, it may be, we may be already in line.
Attorney or whatever, what that term is.
Yeah.
Because it, it does not say the school day.
But if that's the way we're gonna consider that, instructional time, I want everybody in this room to please at least listen to some of the things I think you ought to know about in the safety world.
Well, I, I've got some things too, because, you know, when you watch, when people do presentations, they pull sources from where they want to show what they are trying to prove, correct? So I've been researching, and I've got some things that need to be shown as well, that don't just necessarily skew it that way. You know what I'm saying?
When it comes to safety?
I'm talking about facts, too.
I'm talking about safety.
I, I mean, I'm too, I'm too, Robert.
I understand, but, but I, I know where you're going with that, I think.
Not necessarily.
But, but as, as respectfully as I can, I really want y'all to listen to some of these safety things because the communication is there and happens all the time.
I agree with you.
And, and, and one thing I have learned since I've, I have been in that and been in law enforcement for twenty-five years in this county, uh, it's not a matter of if.
It's when.
It's when.
You're right.
And I wanna be as free as I can and make this as streamlined as possible, easier for you guys to be able to handle. Y'all two are the ones that are gonna catch it bad. And I know that, and I'm man enough to sit here in front of everybody and say that.
Well, I wanna do the right thing.
I know. And somehow we gotta, we gotta do more than just create a policy, we gotta figure out a way to back y'all as well through this, cause it's gonna hit the fan when it does.
Yeah.
And, uh, that's the, that's the bottom line, and we, we, this is not going, this is not something we can do. I mean, we've been here two hours, this is not something we can even do in two hours. We have all diligently sat here and this is something we're taking serious and we need to continue to do that. Regardless of how bad, I'd like for you to have a policy from the policy committee. I mean, you're always welcome to move forward with an agenda item and do something else, but... I think we're on the right path. I think if, if, if we were to the point we've got to with policy, with amending and five amendment, we've got a pretty good document if we can get that typed together, shoot back to everybody really quickly, then we can start working on the offenses, start talking about the different things, stuff of that nature. Maybe get, if you could get the Homeland Security guy that, that had all that, even, even if it was just something, he could type up in an email that's, "Look, folks, I'll come talk to you if you want me to, or hear this side of things." We might can move a little faster than, cause I don't think nobody in this room has an issue with, hey, let's call it one day and just talk about it if we want, we want...
I think we need to contact the district attorney too about confiscation, because I've been told we can't keep them overnight.
Well, that was my question, we need to find out, uh, if you put in your policy, whether, whether, if you can keep them, would you wanna keep it overnight for the first offense, a week for the second offense, six months for the third offense, whatever.
Schools have a little bit more.
Yeah, I, I've been, he called, Craig Northcott called at one point and told me that I was not allowed to do that.
We can do that too, we can, I can help you with that one.
Okay, can you find out, Robert?
And, uh, we'll, uh, we'll get that going.
Thank you.
As well, so if we can roll an original, or start of a document out.
Alright. I'll pop it up and I'll email it.
Get it to everybody, we'll start working on those things, get some information from that guy, the other guy. We'll forward all that to everybody and then we'll be ready to put something together. Does that sound, Mr. George, you've been awful quiet, is there anything you wanna say?
It's okay, I'll answer to both.
Oh, that was, Jennifer's a sister, so...
He knows.
I had to, it took me a minute.
As, uh, on your, on your offenses, uh, I don't mind giving a call to Jennifer or, or being one at T S B A.
Yes.
Uh, I'll see Chuck next week, we could ask him about the confiscation part of it.
Yeah, I'd like to know, just definitively.
Northcott, too.
Okay.
And find out what they, what the meaning of instructional time.
The definition of that, Dr. Powell.
Yeah.
And that, if you'll get one.
I know.
Because the legislature wrote this policy to put it out on school system.
That's right.
Make it up as he goes.
Oh, we can Google, surely we can Google definition of instructional time.
Um, Mr. Chair.
So...
Mr. Chair.
That's what I think, but I don't know for sure.
Mr. Chair, there is something listed in here.
Yes.
It says, "Except as provided in subdivisions B two through four." So if we can figure out how to find where subdivision B two through four is, it may give us all of that.
No, 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 "Except as provided in subdivision B two through four prohibits a student from using a wireless communication device during instructional time."
So this shows where, when they're allowed to use it, though, the B two through four.
So if they're not allowed to use it, it, it would state it if they were allowed to use it in the lunchroom and any other time.
Yeah, but I'm just thinking if we can figure out what B two through four is...
Well, that'd be two through four.
That...
Section B, then two, three, and four, flip it over.
Oh, okay.
We don't have a four on the back.
Yeah, there is, right here.
Mine doesn't have a four.
Four.
Yeah, four is permits a student to use a wireless communication device during instructional time if the student's using the wireless communication device.
Okay, so those are the exceptions.
Included in the study, students, A, and device, I think it's, Frida, you will look it up. So we got a document, we've got five amendments, motion is on the floor. Uh, we can clear that up, we can get a document created, get that to everybody, a copy of the law as well for comparison, and then any and all information that we can get from all these other people, share amongst each other. And really, we just need to know if we need to make some core changes in the offenses. And we can do that pretty quick, quickly. I think we can still get back on track, Mr. Chairman. So anybody's got anything else to say? If you now ever hold your peace, we got a motion on the floor and we'll...
And what does the motion say?
Oh, my God.
I mean, really, because it's, it's, cause I think it's banning it.
Yes, Frida, it is, it's banned now. It's banned now.
Withdraw your motion and go with the consensus.
Our current policy is banned, this new policy is banned.
If we, it's not until we vote on it.
We got it. Mister, 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 uh... He's gonna withdraw his motion and we're gonna go with the consensus on this policy.
So we're gonna stop, but we're gonna, you're gonna, okay, I'm gonna listen to this, alright. Eddie?
Pardon?
You ready, you wanna withdraw your motion, or we ready to vote, or what?
I'm ready to go with something.
That sounds good to me, because these other sixteen items on the agenda are now officially scrapped. For today.
So if we withdraw the motion, then that will...
Let's build one, let's build one as we described. If we withdraw, withdraw the motion, let's build one as we described, gather the other information, see if we wanna change it or tweak it any other way and then pass it. Same thing, it's the same as.
I agree, I agree too.
Alright, so motion has been withdrawn, uh, agenda item one is now complete. I'm not sure if I can legally do this or how to do it, but either which way, I'm gonna intervene and interrupt and break the rules, break the laws, whatever. It's been a little over two hours. Uh, I would like to, uh, somebody to move to postpone the rest of the agenda for today. Somebody to move to postpone the rest of the agenda for today.
I'll second it.
Just one second though. The A I policy has to be turned into the state by July first.
By July first. So we, by July first.
You mean A one.
May and June. May and June. We got May meeting and June, we got a June meeting.
Yeah, wait, we'll, we'll waive the, we'll waive the second on it. We'll waive the second on it as well. Does that sound?
Yes.
Uh, if y'all wanna knock it out, I mean. How long it take you?
Also the A I thing?
Yeah, those.
Actually, the policy is there. I mean, it's not, the A I policy itself isn't that complicated. You just gotta meet the departments and the T S B A already has one at the bottom. What we gotta do is.
Y'all wanna knock this out real quick so that he can get in on his agenda?
Why don't we set a May agenda, a May date?
Set a May agenda, okay. Everybody say, everybody. I done messed all this up beyond law and everything else this agenda and how this went today, so whatever, sue me. So.
Motion to postpone the rest of the agenda.
Yes.
Who did that?
Mr. Cordell. It was seconded by.
I'll second that.
All right. All right, Ms. Jones, you forward or against it?
For what?
Oh, yes.
Ms. Cordell. Ms. Yent?
Yes.
Mr. Parsley?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Sorry, I'm, I'm done delusional. Ms. Parsley?
Aye.
All right, passes. And I'll vote aye. That is seven to. Yeah, seven to nothing. We're good to go.